This evening. Petition twenty-three oh sixty-nine, the Medina Roads Residence Petition. This is a request for conditional use for a planned development in the R-two zoning district. Namely sixty attached rolling units on forty-four building pads with the following exceptions. A, increase the maximum height from thirty-six feet to approximately forty feet. And B, to increase the maximum FAR from point two-five to point five-five. The matter was published in the Daily Herald on March twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-four. I, we have circulated the petition as our custom and we have some general comments from the Health Department and the Stormwater Department, but no objections filed. Village of Addison has issued comments and filed an objection as has the Village of Bloomingdale. And Roselle indicates both the, when they're heights and Roselle indicate no comments. The task indicates no comments. Bloomingdale Township has not replied with comments. Highway Department indicates that they have commented as of eleven twenty-seven. Bloomingdale Fire Department, Fire District objects and has filed a letter in that regard. And no other comments have been received. I have two exhibits this evening. The first is revised site plan. The second is revised rendering. I'll take them as the four sixteen twenty-four, Exhibits one and Exhibits two. And then before the hearing commenced, Mr. Bookhand, representative of petitioner, indicated that he will rely on some of the exhibits from the prior hearings. So that determine, first of all, we want to incorporate the entire record of the prior hearing. He does, and so we will do so. Just as a brief additional matter, I have four email comments concerning this case from various members of the public, and they will be made a part of the included in the minutes of this case. With that, I'll call on Mr. Boss, I'm sorry, Mr. Bookhands. I'll ask you to be sworn in, but do you have other witnesses that will be sworn in? All the witnesses, okay?
You just saw me swear affirm the testimony about to give at this closing out hearing. Be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Go right ahead.
Okay, let me kind of explain what you have in front of you, which I have labeled Exhibit twenty, but I think you would have labeled it listed as Exhibit one for tonight's hearing. So the changes that have been made since the prior hearing are pretty much the following. The number of units has gone down from seventy to sixty. So a fourteen percent decrease in units. The there have been additional parking spaces and parking areas that you will see. So we now have an addition, a total of thirty visitor parking spaces. The one thing that's a little, that also has changed is that the road way or the internal access areas were originally twenty-four feet wide. Those, those have been changed to twenty-six feet wide to accommodate Bloomingdale Fire Protection District's comments. They wanted twenty-six feet so they could make the access to turn better, and that has been accommodated. And we took one foot between the sidewalk and that right away or in that access out. So there's one foot less green space, two feet more asphalt, and those have really changed the FAR, et cetera, of what we have or had before. Or what we have currently, I should say. We are still guaranteeing that there will be twenty percent workforce housing units, which in this case is twelve of the sixty units will be workforce housing. Those will comply with the Fannie Mae as they did last time. We will be proceeding with those workforce housing units. And as I said, the request of the Bloomingdale Fire Protection District, the internal roads have been widened from twenty-four feet to twenty-six feet. Now, I have run for lack of a better word, jury rate exhibit that after I left the office, it was pointed out I should probably submit. And it is an email from Gary Costello in Bloomingdale Fire Protection District to Stephen Galloway from Cornice and Rose. And they are still pointing out that they had a meeting, the Fire Protection District and DOD had a meeting, I think, late, early, mid-last week, maybe late-last week, where they were talking about the two access and DOD is concerned about the two access marks. That is being worked through with the Bloomingdale Fire Protection District and DOD. And I have run labeled as Exhibit twenty-six. And we'll probably have to clean it up afterwards, but Exhibit twenty-six is the email from the Bloomingdale Fire Protection District saying they, they still want two accesses without any emergency, without any barriers, et cetera, so that there can be safety for their life-saving purposes. The CBA noted not to recommend this project two months ago, and on the record, put forth the following reasons. One, density. Two, non-conformity with the area. Three, parking. Four, well, the use of well and septic. I'm going to go through each of those tonight. I'm not going to go through everything that was the last time you incorporated the record and hopefully will be relatively shorter. I do have another exhibit that I did not hand out, and I apologize, but it's also going to go on the board. Probably too small to see from where you are. But, so I have panning out Exhibit twenty-one. A smaller copy of what I'm putting on the board.
Okay, let me just clear up this exhibit business. Did you submit Exhibits one through nineteen at the earlier hearing?
One through eighteen.
One through eighteen?
And I skipped nineteen because I wasn't sure when they started doing it, how many I got to.
All right, and then rather than renumber all of these with today's date and Exhibit four sixteen dash one, I'm going to take your numbering and withdraw the designation that I indicated earlier. So these are premarked, we'll take yours as various numbers, twenty through twenty-five, I guess.
Yeah, and we may not use all of those, but as I said, we significantly lowered the number of units by ten or fourteen percent. And it is for this reason that the Development Committee asked you to take another look at the project. The primary elements of density, as you know, are floor ratio, building coverage, and green space or lack of impervious surface. The number of units per acre, my opinion, is the least important of these from a land use standpoint. So let's go through, as you heard a lot about this development to the north, which is the townhomes directly to the north at the last hearing and how this was not compatible or in harmony, et cetera. It's very important to remember what is behind this lot. They are large industrial boxes. This isn't open space, it isn't residential, it is industrial, in box, thirty-five, forty-foot-high clears. These are not, this is not a neighborhood. It is not backing up to a neighborhood, it is backing up to an industrial development, Hamilton Partners Industrial Development. It has been there for probably close to thirty years. So I'm going to go through these numbers and compare it to what we're calling the nickel quarter, which is the one directly to the north. Units per acre, they have nine point eight four per acre, we're at eleven point one. And these numbers are going to be slightly, are going to be different than what you heard at the last hearing for a couple of reasons. One is, we've spoken to staff about how we should be measuring nickel court. The second one is, we've obviously got less units. So nickel court per acre is nine point eight four and we're at eleven point one. It's about slightly more than a ten percent difference, not very much. But let's look at really what the main factors of regulations and density are. What are those? Percentage impervious surface. Nickel court is sixty-two percent impervious. We're at forty-five percent. If my math is right, it's about twenty-five percent less. FAR, nickel court, solar ratio, point eight-two. What's ours? We've asked for point five-five, but realistically, it's about point five-two, just so we don't make a mistake, so there's somewhat of a factor, but it is about forty percent less, thirty-five to forty percent less than the build, than the project right next door. Percent building coverage. The nickel court has building coverage of thirty-four percent. What's ours? Seventeen point seven.
It's half.
Maybe forty-eight percent, but close enough to half. So to say that the density of our project is so much greater than the ones to the north is ludicrous. It's disingenuous. It's based on number of units only. Why do we have more units? Because of that workforce housing, we have smaller units. How does that come into play when you deal with land use? The only thing that changes, it doesn't change the setbacks, it doesn't change green space, the number of units only does one thing. It increases traffic. Right? Forty units versus sixty, is there any real difference? Not other than it increases traffic. You heard from the traffic engineer and it was undisputed. No one contradicted it, no one came in here with different numbers. All you received was some anecdotal evidence. That it's busy out there. But the traffic engineer showed how there were significant gaps and significant safety was, there was enough gaps for significant safety to be handled. I understand people talk about more traffic on Medina Road, but it's built to handle it. And there's enough spacing to handle it, especially when you have two entrances and two exits. And in fact, where it's going to be fourteen percent less traffic than the traffic engineer said was, was doable without any problem. So now we're fourteen percent less than that number. In reality, when one looks at all the factors of density and not just focus on the number of units, this project is less dense than the project directly to the north. Let's talk about harmony, that was the second thing I grabbed from the recommendation transcript. Given the fact that the project is actually less dense than the project to the north, this development is clearly in harmony with the area. Especially when you consider the large box industrial behind it. This is hugely important and cannot be understated. Basic land planning is that this type of use is a great transitional use from industrial to detached single-family housing. No one wants to put single-family housing backing up to industrial staring at a thirty-foot-five, thirty-five, forty-foot-high wall. This is the type of use we put in everywhere around this county to segregate the industrial from the single-family homes. Well, this multiple units is a great use, it's a perfect use from a land planning standpoint. And for anyone, that's why Addison, which is now objecting to this project, the staff, well, sorry, that is why Addison approved a project directly to the north of multifamily townhomes, because it is a great transitional use. For now, for them now to say that this is, this development is out of character with that development is disingenuous. Really, the only difference between these two projects is the workforce housing. The only difference. Let's talk about parking. Let's start with what's actually important regarding parking. The county has an ordinance that ordinance would require a hundred and fifty spaces for sixty units. That's the requirement. That's the only requirement in your ordinance. What are we providing? A hundred and eighty-two. Twenty percent more. And fourteen visitor spaces, which I think is more than doubled what was in the original plan. Remember, these are not huge homes. It's not like I'm going to have a party with thirty people coming over for the Super Bowl. You can't fit thirty people in any of these units. It's not a single-family estate home where we're going to have fifty people showing up at someone's house. Let's talk rigoristically, this is not a development that's going to have a huge amount of large amounts of visitors. They're smaller units, hence the sixty, and almost every time they have visitors, the parking spaces in front of the garage will be sufficient. You're not going to have six cars show up at a one-bedroom unit. Especially when a lot of these are workforce housings, which means they're smaller. Realistically, the visitor parking space are going to have very limited use and will probably never come near capacity. As far as DOD and the red, as I said, we've been working with Bloomingdale Fire Protection and DOD to resolve their conflicting desires. And those are not settled now, but obviously, as you know, approved or not, even if this development's approved, that's going to have to get solved. Because we're going to need permits from us. Now would be our job. Let's talk about well and septic, that was the fourth thing I heard or read and heard. County regulations on this are very clear and will be complied with. Denying this development on the basis of being developed on well and septic is just wrong. To deny or base your denial on that would be legally improper. County has said, county staff and the county engineering staff looked at this development and said, we have no concerns. Those are the people who have to deal with the septic and well. Your ordinances say well and septic are acceptable. That, that project will have to comply with those ordinances. That's not something that is worth in overlook. The whole doomsday scenario of this septic system or the well failing is really nothing more than fear mongering. Any system that did fail would have to be repaired, repaired by the owner of the real estate. And we're not in the danger of this county anymore having a well that goes dry. Maybe another well would have to be done, that would be at the owner of the real estate. But we now have a position in two each county where actually probably ninety-plus percent of our water does not come from our wells. It is coming from Lake Michigan through the DuPage Water Commission. So it's not like, oh, my gosh, a well's dried up, we can't find another well. There's a lot of water down there that we're no longer using. So these other incorporated problems, areas that, incorporated areas that have had problems associated with them have largely been resolved by the county. Not the municipality. Often through obtaining water from the DuPage Water Commission through the county. That's the fix, it's got to prevent ever, something ever happened on water. Probably the most important thing, well, there is no way a village could be required to take over this project and provide utilities. That's their choice, if they decide to do that, that's up to them. But nothing the county does or anybody else can do could require them to take it over. That's what we've been hearing from Bloomingdale and Addison, oh, my gosh, we're going to have to take this. It's not true. Again, probably the most important thing to note on this issue is the DuPage County's own engineering staff has said, quote, "No objections, concerns with the concept of the petition," end quote. Accordingly, every reason that this board provided for recommending denial of this project has been resolved or is not valid to start with. Special use standards. Let's talk about those quickly, I'm not going to go through them all again, and you heard me last time, and it's in the record. But I do want to say a couple of things. Your staff in the state's attorney's office has advised that this is a special use and comes under the normal special use standards in the zoning ordinance. As I showed very clearly at the last hearing, we have all those standards and clearly make them even more today. I can board you with recitation, recitation of those. The only two exceptions of being sought are height, which is de minimis, and the case of floor ratio. As I already showed you, the floor ratio is approximately forty, thirty-five, forty percent less than the one directly to the north. Plus, as we discussed at the prior hearing, due to the fact that the planned development is a conditional use in our two zoning district, living room decision by the Illinois Supreme Court applies. It can only be overcome by clear and convincing evidence. Thompson versus Coke, County Board of Appeals, ninety-six eleven-third, five sixty-one, is a first district decision. Treating a PUD, exactly what you have here, a planned development, as a conditional use and treating it under the same special use standards during your ordinance. You don't get to rewrite the special use standards because it's a, because it's a planned development. That's not something you have the ability to do. As there was no evidence presented, disputing applicant's presentation at the last hearing and evidence regarding his compliance with DuPage County conditional use standards, there can be no finding that the objectors overcame the required clear and convincing standard. I'm going to talk for a minute about a couple of the objections, the village objections. Stormwater. This is a huge red herring. Let's be honest, everybody in this room knows, the village is wrong that we have to comply with the DuPage County stormwater regulations. We can't say, oh, my gosh, we're going to make this noise for Bloomingdale's law course. There is no way county staff is going to let that happen. And for Bloomingdale to make a big issue out of that just shows that they really have nothing else and they're trying to grasp at straws. That is not any way, shape, or form a problem for this project. Again, the county engineering set, staff said they have no objections or concerns. If we can't design the project to meet the stormwater standards, project's not going to go whether you approve it or not. And as we know, the county has a very thorough process and a staff that makes sure this does not happen. Nothing gets slipped by the stormwater department of DuPage County. Anybody who's dealt with them and the umpteen meetings you have on every project and the umpteen submittals knows it's not going to proceed unless it complies with the stormwater ordinance. Okay, Addison's objections as to density. And Bloomingdale makes some of the same objections, but it's more appropriate with Addison, I guess. First of all, as shown, development approved by Addison to the north is without, without a doubt denser than the proposed development. Second, the history of the neighborhood, which this project proceeded before the project of Addison should be considered. And usually I don't really do this, but I think it's important in this case because Addison is putting up such a fight. It's important to know that the Addison Development Staff not only recommended approval of a very similar project on the site, staff actually encouraged this type of development, meaning Addison's staff for political reasons and not for zoning reasons. That same board said they did not care about the planning of the ordinance recommendations about the original project. It can only assume the village again is ignoring the zoning standards involved here. The reason Addison staff supported the project when it was before the village was, was that it was in harmony and consistent with the project directly to the north and the project directly to the west, or east, excuse me. I know many of you may be aware of the current political pressure being around at least County Board, certain county board members regarding this project right now by Addison and Bloomingdale. But I strongly ask that you look at zoning principles involved here and decide on those issues alone and let the projects play themselves out on the board level.
Just for the record, I'm entirely unaware of any political intrigue with respect to this case or any other case, either from the villages or the county.
When the ordinance of designing issues, this project is an appropriate use and density for development on the site. Further, we will reach out to both villages to try and come up with a compromise. In response to those requests, the village of Bloomingdale never bothered to respond. And while Addison responded, they failed to come back with any solutions or compromise. They just advised us again how much they dislike the project due to the density and use of private utilities. Despite the handling, the private utilities do not affect them as no one can force, force them or any other municipality to take over the utilities for the person. As for the density, given the density of our improvement next door, I wonder whether Addison would be complaining other than the fact that the sixty units come from the concept of workforce housing. Everyone says that we need more workforce housing, they just don't seem to want it in their area. In sum, we made the standards of the zoning ordinance, we made the standards and the special use standards, and this project is a project that should proceed, and we ask for your recommendation, no problem, thank you.
Just a couple of clarification questions. You're, you indicated you're still working with the County Highway Department with respect to the roadway entrance?
Yes.
What's, when do you think that will be resolved?
I don't know that that will be resolved for a while.
And discussions with the fire department?
Those have been resolved.
What about, you didn't, I didn't hear anything about some of the information that I saw in the letter indicating that sprinkler systems are an issue. The request for extended heights may require some special water treatment to suppress possible fires. I have that letter.
We have agreed to sprinkler and we will do whatever is necessary for that. We told Bloomingdale Fire Protection District that.
Okay.
These conversations have been occurring in the last three or four days, so.
And I presume, just to go to utilities, I presume that the development to the north is serviced by public well and septic, public water, okay? All right. I'll just open for questions from any member of the board.
Okay, I don't see any questions. Are you ready, Mr. Bookhands for public comment?
All right, who in the audience would like to make a comment or ask questions about this case? So could you stand so I can count you and then I'll ask that you be sworn in? Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, is there somebody behind you, sir? All right. Last call. Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine people? All right, raise your hands if you're sworn in.
Raise your right hands, please. You just saw me swear affirm the testimony about to give at this closing out hearing. Will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I guess. All right, if there's anyone representing a municipality or other public entity, I'd ask that you go first if you would. And then I'll take any attorneys representing a group and then I'll go to just regular folks like me, members of the public. Right.
Good evening, Peter Skler with the Village of Bloomingdale. We have submitted a letter of objection to the project on that it's going to be made part of the record, so I'm not going to reiterate that. I just wanted to respond to a couple of comments that were made in regards to concerns that the Village of Bloomingdale has. First, the impact to, we, we fully trust the DuPage Engineering Staff, however, the fact is that the project is being proposed that the water would be retained on-site and then passed on along to the Village of Bloomingdale, which is very different than the current flow of stormwater. And we believe it will have a detrimental effect to the Village of Bloomingdale. Secondly, a comment was made that the applicant reached out to the Village of Bloomingdale and we failed to respond. I can tell you that is completely false. No one has ever contacted the Village of Bloomingdale to set up any kind of meeting with the Village of Bloomingdale to discuss this project. So to, to say that, that is, is false, and I, I wanted to at least have you realize that that wasn't a true statement. In keeping with the harmony of the neighborhood, the, the number of units and the design of the units are not within the keeping of the neighborhood and will not be a harmonious flow from what is currently there to the north and to the west of that project. The building materials, the architectural styles are very different than what is being proposed and will not match that area and will have a negative impact to that area. And then in regards to the workforce housing, again, our point is that we do not object to workforce housing, but we do not feel that this is an appropriate location for that considering that it's nowhere near any sort of public transportation hub. So to place workforce housing shouldn't be placed in an area that, that those individuals would have easy access to public transportation to get to and from work. That is all that I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who's next? You, sir? Who's next? You, sir?
My name is Joseph Fortunato. I'm the attorney for Natalie Steg with Scott Benz who live at five N O forty-one Medina Road. That property is approximately two hundred feet to the south of the proposed improvements. Counsel for the petitioner, I haven't told you, essentially drew a picture for you that said this place is going to be essentially in front of it or next to an industrial park. It is not two hundred feet from an industrial park. It's much greater, there's a much greater distance, but there's a more significant impact on my client's property, which is a single-family residence. The statements made by counsel are speculations, especially musings about the future shouldn't be considered evidence. I can use about the future where with sixty units, if twenty percent of the unit owners have visitors on a particular day with two cars each, you're going to exhaust the amount of parking spaces, which were described first at thirty spaces and then at fourteen spaces. I don't know what to believe anymore. I keep hearing different things from counsel and different things from his clients. They're unreliable. Let's think about the impact of shoving in an improvement next to, we talked about Nicola Court, but we've got residential properties to the south. There has to be a greater impact on stormwater management and drainage issues, which are already significant at my client's property. They're only going to be made significantly worse. There was a statement made by counsel prior hearing that we ought to make, we'll make it better, and we have to. Well, that's not evidence. That's musing, that's speculation, and there's been nothing to support that statement. How could it be any better when you put in improvements on a small parcel this significant, this much size? More units, yes, they mean more people. They mean more traffic. They mean more children. It's going to be an impact on the schools, which hasn't been discussed. Medina Road supposedly built to handle additional traffic? British would say that's awash, rubbish. It's not built for additional traffic. It's a two-lane blacktop road, and it's going to have a significant impact on traffic. Harmony issues? This is a transitional use? Maybe Nicola Court was a transitional use, but to add more, it's too late to add more to the spot. There's going to be much greater impact by shoving in more improvements that can't be substantiated, and the idea that well-inseptic failure is a doomsday scenario, that kind of disparaging statement just ignores reality. What happens when the well-inseptic systems fail, as they inevitably do? Not might, but inevitably do. The petitioner is not going to be around to take care of it. Petitioner is going to be long gone at this point. I described earlier how the petitioner will not have any responsibility for repairs once this is all done. They're going to be gone. There's no primitive contract with owners. They're going to be responsible on their own. Absentee owners historically, and it's a matter of common sense, don't maintain property to the same standards that residential owners do on their own properties. As far as meeting county requirements is concerned, that may be in a vacuum, but let's think about the fact that we have a substantial impact already on this area, which is only going to be made worse by allowing additional improvements. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do you have a comment, sir? Where'd you, or are you the gentleman from Addison?
No, he's not.
He's not here? Okay. Well, then queue up, folks, and we'll take members of the public.
My name is James Terry. I am the resident homeowner at two four zero six Nicola Court in Addison. I serve on the board of the Villaterino Homeowners Association, and I'm speaking on the board's behalf. Villaterino is adjacent to the north side of the planned development and would be most affected by its construction. Our homeowners are strongly opposed to this development and urge you to reject this petition. The developer is seeking a variation to the county zoning ordinance allowing, while building sixty apartment units, which would add an estimated one hundred and sixty residents to our neighborhood, will also add one hundred and twenty vehicles to the overall traffic. As you know, this board previously considered and voted unanimously against an almost identical petition and found that this developer had not demonstrated or provided sufficient evidence that the proposed development will not be injurious to our neighborhood. Your findings were explicit that the petitioner had not demonstrated that the proposed development will not diminish property values, increase traffic compression, increase the potential for flood damages, among other detriments that you found. These same detriments are still the inevitable effects of the proposed development now before you, and it deserves the same findings, conclusions, and recommendations as before. The county zoning ordinance provides that variations to the regulations, such as requested by the developer in this instance, may be granted if it will result in better developments and thus be of greater benefit both to the occupants of the development and to the surrounding neighborhood. The developer has not offered any evidence as to how this proposed development will benefit the surrounding neighborhood. In fact, this development offers no benefits, only detriments to our neighborhood and properties. And we understand that DuPage County is eager to establish workforce housing program. While we support this effort, we believe it should be accomplished in accordance with county zoning ordinance which protect existing neighborhoods from the negative impact of large developments such as this proposal, and that is whether such developments include workforce housing or not. And we hope there are properties throughout DuPage County which will accommodate large developments and include significant workforce housing, while not posing a detriment to existing neighborhoods, as does this proposal. We urge you to oppose this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person?
So, we have a seventy, Matta, Matta, seventy-five, she of court in Bloomingdale. It's directly opposite the lots.
He's called your last name?
Matta, I don't know what you mean, Matta. So a couple of things I'd like to point out. Once we heard that this calculation here had been changed from what it was done last time. So my question is, did you input or provide input on what changed? So your entry goes into the record. What is the calculation that's changed, number one? So you mentioned there's a little more than ten percent. What changed in that ten percent?
It's on the site plan, sir?
Okay, okay. So that's one point. The second thing is we heard little use of the word disingenuous. So the question is, what's disingenuous? Is to have ignored completely that Nicola Court is less than thirty-six feet, and this development will be forty feet high. The second point I'd like to make about the nature of the development is that it's very, very far away from the industrial areas at the back. The industrial areas at the back cannot be seen from the road, Medina Road, or from my home. I cannot see a single trace of any one of those. The third point I'd like to make is that the whole nature of this, the strategy, right? The strategy we started is something that's insane, like seventy units. Modified and come down with something that's nearly outrageous, which is sixty units. So I'd like you to keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to me. My name, my name is Meena Patel, P A T E L. I live at one seven nine Michigan Court. Again, live right across the street from the subdivision that's going to be built. I think my concern is around water. All of our homes across the street have flooded. And so to say that, to say that the subdivision will never impact us and the fear of the stormwater impacting our homes is just, again, the same word that we keep using is that we're falsely trying to create something out of nothing is not true, right? There, we already, all the homes across the street, all of us have flooded. We have more than two inches of rain on a regular basis nowadays. So to say that they're going to store the water and then ship it to Bloomingdale at some point, it will impact because those pipes are right underneath our homes that will actually send it to the Bloomingdale Golf Course. When it snows, there is no place to put the snow. All that snow in that subdivision needs to be pulled out and put out to the main street of Medina, which will impact traffic. When that snow is built up to a certain height, you'll not be able to see around the corner when our subdivision folks come out to take turns, and there will be accidents, right? There's no place for the kids to stand for their school bus. I'm a mom, and one of the things that I worry about is those apartments, that's what they are. We keep calling them homes, apartments, and there will be kids living there. There will be birthday parties. And they will want to play across the street, across the Medina Street into our subdivision park. My worry is those kids are going to get hurt. All that traffic on Medina will impact those children. So at the end of the day, we're talking about septic, water, snow, children. And again, this is the same issue that we've come back and talked to you about. I also want to know that, can I ask a question, sir? When you included their stuff from the last meeting, will you also include all the homeowners? There are a hundred plus homeowners who wrote in letters. And every time this gets kicked back, we actually have to go back to the entire subdivision to go get it. So there are all these letters that have been written, and I personally have written letters in both of the meetings that have come before.
The entire record of the hearing will be made part of this hearing. Now, let me make a distinction. I don't recall now. This is a little bizarre technicality, but I am now taking public comment related to this hearing. It's my general recollection that the letters that you were referring to were public comments related to the requirement to conduct or to allow public comment pursuant to the Open Meetings Act. So I don't know if they're a part of our hearing record or a part of the minutes to the meeting that we held last time. I don't know the answer to that. You could probably check with the staff to determine.
Would the staff here be able to tell us this or no?
I'm not going to ask them to do that now, but you can infer with them asking.
Also, many of these things are not being posted prior to these meetings. One of the things that we agreed on is that these things would be posted so we in advance could look at all this stuff, and that's not happened. So that's the other thing that I wanted to kind of address is that every time we say, I'm coming in cold, I looked at whatever was out there, and there was only one piece of paper, which was that. All these other things that he gave you, none of us have.
We didn't either.
Yeah, I know. But for us, I mean, as homeowners, we also want to be able to have a say-so in something. How can I come and say anything if I don't have any of the material that they're submitting to you? And that was the same issue last time, right? Would you ask them to say, please submit things in advance so the homeowners can come in and look at it? All right.
Well, I'm not going to advise you about the solution to that problem other than to say you have a right to cross-examine the petitioner with respect to these exhibits, and you have a right to have access to the exhibit, and then you can make a comment. I'll hold the record in the hearing open for some period of time so that you can view these documents at a later date if you choose to do so, and then send us your responses.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Last name Baker, first name Thomas. My wife's stepping in. I, we reside at three fifty-eight Carey Court, Bloomingdale. Our property backs up to Medina Road, so we are just west of Medina Road. Traffic, we can hardly sit outside on our patio. There's so much traffic. Constantly, and it's a, it's a two-lane road. One lane goes north, one lane goes south. It's not built for the type of traffic that the proposed developer is proposing here. This is maybe my fourth meeting that I've been to. I keep hearing the developer refer to this as single-family housing. As Ms. Patel said, these are apartments. This is not single-family housing. These are apartments. This is not in harmony with the area. There are no apartments anywhere along Medina Road from Lake Street to Army Trail. There are high-end townhouses to the north. They're not apartments. They're high-end townhouses. There is residential to the west. These are very expensive homes. These are not apartments. There is no harmony going on with this proposed development. And as someone else had mentioned, first we heard thirty-some parking spaces, now we hear fourteen. So we hear a lot of inconsistencies. And every time I come to a meeting, I hear something different. This all continues to change. So in summary, I am totally opposed to this project. It doesn't meet our neighborhood, and I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Gail Domineces. I reside at twenty-four twenty-one Nicola Court in Addison.
You've got your last name, please.
D O M I N I C I S. And normally my husband comes, and this is the first time I've ever spoke publicly about this. But just because personally I need to talk about, I, my residence, the front door is the closest to this property besides these people here. So I will look out at this development out of every window and my front door on this. I also have concerns with the water because I do see at the northeast corner of this proposed development, there is a lot of water collection that goes there. I have taken many pictures. I have been concerned about it coming over. I've already seen erosion. And so for this gentleman to say that when this project is all said and done, that the owners will take care of it if there's any problem with that, I don't trust that that will happen based on what I'm seeing right now, that it's contained and it's fine. Regarding safety, I walk my dog every day. I have watched the increase of traffic on Medina Road. It's, I know that they've put up speed cameras and lights, and there's been some police presence. There are people zooming down there. Mike, I can barely walk across the street to go to the neighborhood to get across the street several times during the day. It's not just busy times. So for that to be, that needs to be talked about. My safety, I'm concerned about my own personal safety now with all of this transient apartment situation and based on the location of my unit. I am concerned about that. So that's all I want to say is, my property is directly affected like everybody else's, but I am right on the edge if you want to look up where my property is. So I'm a, I deeply oppose this. So does my husband and all of my neighbors that have spoke here tonight. Thank you very much.
My name's Natalie Steg. Our representative, Mr. Fortunato spoke for us, but I'm a member of the public and a homeowner. That's, to not repeat from the project, I'd like to.
Spell your last name.
Sure, thank you. It's S T E C. I'm at five N zero four one Medina Road. And I think you, there was a question that I had that you think you clarify the exhibits that we had also previously submitted all the pictures of the flooding will be part of the record as well as they were submitted last time.
I think if you submitted them during the hearing in response to the public comment section at the hearing, they are definitely part of the record.
Okay, then that's what we did. And so I'm not going to repeat everything that was kind of already said or what we included in those things, but just a couple of things and comments to some of the things that were brought up today. And this is, this is one of the exhibits that we had previously submitted, but there's this, there's this assertion that's being made with this well-inseptic that it's going to be maintained, and Mr. Gray, for the owner, it's never really clear who's going to be the long-term owner of this property. The last we knew from the land partners, land and real estate advisors, these lots are still listed for sale. And they're listed for sale as a potential high-density development. And so part of what's always been a concern for us, because we've been dealing with this now, I think, three years, four years, going back through with the Addison proceedings, since that was brought up today by council, the specifics are never really available. And so part of what becomes a concern is that when you say, well, we're proposing sixty units, nobody really knows what those units look like because floor plans have never been offered. And what we learned in the Addison proceedings is that when floor plans were offered, the floor plans were variable that although by presentment, they look like two-bedroom units, they can actually be converted to three-bedroom They can actually be converted to three-bedroom units by adding a, a closet or by adding a window. So the density issue is an issue because you're talking about sixty units and forty-four, and forty-four building plots. But, but more importantly, who is going to be the owner that takes care of this when the well, if there's a, a failure of the well and septic system? Given that he's actively soliciting people to purchase these five lots. One of the other things that we've heard as well is that. Well, if there's any problems, we'll take care of it. We're required to do certain things. We'll have to do it if the county tells us to. Well, I think history will tell us in this particular case, that's not necessarily true. Um, up until March nineteenth of twenty twenty-four, property taxes on all five of those units had been sold. And it wasn't until March twentieth that those taxes were redeemed. And I'm assuming because we brought it up at the March twentieth meeting, how do you have somebody petitioning before the county on these slots when none of the property taxes have been paid by them? We've also, as the single-family homeowners and the people that live across the way. The county and the village ordinances are not complied with. Properties are not maintained. The, the lawns are not mowed. Weed control is not maintained. It has been, I believe, I don't know if it was the Village of Addison or the Village of Bloomingdale, at one point hit a lien on these properties because they had to come out and take care of them. So we, we have, we have evidence of when they say we're going to do what we, what we're told to do and comply, that hasn't happened with the basic thing of mowing some weeds. So I, we have grave concerns. What happens going forward with a sewer and septic? We know we're on sewer and septic. We've dealt with issues on either side of us, of neighbors, when things don't go well. And, and while we appreciate that the county is involved and the county has to do it, it's a process that takes time. It's not something that gets remedied overnight. So in the interim. Water contamination. There is smell. It is something that the homeowners have to deal with. Um, and we would like for that to be taken into consideration. For the various reasons that we said at the last meeting, for the reasons that are being stated here. Um, we, we object to this. It is not about workforce housing. Uh, you know, I, I think as we sit here today, we're not even really sure what workforce housing is. But as a homeowner that has been in the community for fourteen years, as a small business owner that has been in the county of DuPage now for eighteen years. We have a vested interest and we come here to object, not because we just want to say no to Mr. Gray. But we want somebody that has a vested interest in the community as well, and somebody who has heard and listened to the community concerns and has been a good neighbor. And so far, that has not happened. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last gentleman.
Scott Benz, last name B E M C, at the five N zero four one Medina Road. Uh, I kind of want to address the Hamilton business part that I hear a lot about it, transition area. So if I'm on my lot and I would lay a level on my lot and I would go east and I would touch the, the current, refers to a big box building. Those buildings foundation, I'm probably twelve feet down from the grade of my line. So if a building back there is thirty-five feet. It really doesn't look like it's thirty-five feet because the foundation of the building starts down approximately ten or twelve feet. Um, there's also a fifty-foot barrier approximately of large mature, mature trees and brush. So through season, the year, we don't even see the building. Um. Also. Along express lanes, you'll see that they build these big cement walls that look like, um, you know, a nice brick wall. This is a solid cement wall back there. What it does actually is it creates a noise barrier. We're only a mile from three fifty-five, two ninety, that whole intersection. Some quiet night you can hear that sound, but that building actually presents a noise barrier. And most importantly, when we moved in and we bought the house, we knew it was there. So it was our choice. If that would have bothered us, we would have moved out and got something somewhere else. Just like the rest of the neighbors, town home complexes, they were all aware of that complex being there when they decided to merge into the properties. But now we're going to have a, a parking complex. They have a play on words, you know, single family dwelling units, apartments, workforces. It's hard to really. You know, distinguish what it really means. I've got a question for you guys. Has, has the county come up with a definition? Official definition of workforce housing? Yeah?
Um, the short answer to that is no. Uh, I don't know what the status is. Uh, I spoke uh. Briefly about my opinion of uh whether we should consider workforce housing uh. As part of the rationale for this case or any other case. Uh, some of the requirements that need to be included in a workforce housing project are some continuing oversight or monitoring or. Some of the issues that you suggested. Uh, I'm keeping a checklist so that when uh. The county calls me to ask me what I think about workforce housing, I've got a long list of suggestions, but the short answer is ain't nothing happening.
And then also talking about density. No, I'm not an expert when it comes to the F A R calculations or whatever, but I've got a couple of handouts here from previous agents in Addison. That one of our attorneys, attorneys submitted to the, the Village of Addison. And it references Casabella, Villaterino and uh. And I've got a document I've put together here for his, you know, proposed forty-four building pads. So Casabella talks about Villaterino, the killer court all the time. There's another town home complex that's, we aren't looking there. That town home complex has roughly five point seven seven. Twenty-four units, that's four point one eight units per acre. That's ten thousand four hundred eighty-five square feet land per acre. Now I go on to Nicola Court, Villaterino. And extended Addison, May fifteenth, two thousand six, roughly two point five four acres. Nineteen units, seven point four eight units per acre. Five thousand eight hundred and twenty-three square feet land per acre. There's a little bit of question when it comes to this development because there is one lot that is. It's on our lawn. It's incorporated into Addison. Not a hundred percent sure how that's figured into these equations. My equation here is I took. Property that is going to be built, the buildings, five hundred and twenty feet long. Three hundred. Sorry, five hundred and twenty feet wide, three hundred and eighty-seven feet long. So that roughly comes to four point six two acres. Of forty-four building pads or they're trying to put sixty dwelling units on there. So that comes to nine point five two paths per acre, which is much more dense, more dense than Villaterino for seven point four eight minutes. We want to talk about the dwelling units. That ends up being twelve point nine eight dwelling units per acre. I've got a handout here. That out with you guys so you can see the dollars that I talked about.
Oh, uh, that's up to you. If you want to make that an exhibit, that's fine. Your testimony presumably reflects what's in the document, so you could either offer as your exhibit or. Devise on your uh oral testimony.
Your choice.
Pardon me?
Your choice. I don't know how this really works. I, why I did, I go out and I mentioned this, so I don't give a.
Cool. If you want to make it an exhibit, go right ahead.
Alright.
Tell, tell us your last name again.
Benz, B E M C.
Alright, I'll take this as Benz's uh hearing exhibit number one. And you're an objector, so it's objector Benz uh hearing exhibit one.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the uh remarks from the public about the case. I guess everybody needs. What we brought to, well, when you heard the testimony and this is apparently a reflection of what's in the. Mr. Lukans, you want to wrap up?
I just want to honor this one of the things that were said. First of all, Mr. Schlerer said that they never received an email from us. On February sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, three oh one P M, my client emailed Mayor Helen Petriel. Uh, and received no response. Uh, we also heard from Mr. Schlerer about the design and the units, building material and style. As this board has told me many times. You are not an architectural review board and you do not care about the renderings and what the building looks like from the outside. That's not your purview. Um. Inappropriate location because no, no transportation. I can promise you that there are no train stations anywhere near unincorporated DuPage County. If that's our requirement for workforce housing, might as well throw it out the window. There is no public trans, no rail train stations other than in the downtown areas of every city. They grew up around the train station. Plus, it doesn't matter because these are not Section Eight housing. We'll talk about it in a minute. This is workforce housing. These are people with jobs, teachers. Educate, they're educators. They may be policemen, firemen. These are not people that are seeking handouts. These are people who we are trying to get into our. Able to live in our community, who work in our community. These are people who work in our community. I heard really about, oh, I'm afraid, afraid of my safety. Again, this isn't Section Eight housing. These are transients. These are people who are living there for a significant period of time. Not, they're not written by the week. They're not written by the month. And they're not. Poor. The problem in our county, and I don't want to get into it throughout this country, is there is not enough housing. So the housing number has gotten so expensive that the guy making forty thousand dollars a year can't afford to live in our county. That's what this does. My daughter was twenty-seven. She couldn't live in this county. She's got a job. She's been working for five years. She's a manager in a hotel. Um. I, I do admit that I originally said fourteen spaces. It is thirty. You can see what I was drawing. I overspoke from the last hearing. But it was thirty spaces, visitors' parking spaces. Okay, I hesitate to go too far down the shore of a stormwater again. Everybody on this board knows, as does staff. That we have no choice, as does the real estate staff, but to make the situation better. That's the zoning order. That's the stormwater ordinance. They're one cubic feet. That's the release rate. It has to get better. I know they don't understand it because they don't understand the engineering, but we've been dealing with this now for twenty years. Um. That doesn't back out to a muster of room. They heard that. And I apologize on the exhibit thread here. On the big drawing, but you saw it the last time and I have a small copy here if everyone wants to see it. Directly behind this building is industrial. Directly behind. I know sometimes you may not be able to see that from two, three, from six to seven months of the year, but the other five to six, four to five, you sure can. The other thing that you hear when you live next to industrial is not what you see, it's what you hear. This is industrial with eighteen wheelers coming in and out all day long. If anything, this will block that view and block that noise. Uh, no. Real development. Is. Consistent with other zoning. We heard about property values. It is assumed that property values are not affected because that development style and type is already there. You heard no evidence of anybody coming in and saying property value, no actual evidence, the property values are actually going to be diminished. We heard a lot of speculation. On the other hand, this is the same type of development as next door, other than the fact that maybe apartments versus townhomes, but let's be honest, the county's zoning ordinance. Does not make a distinction from a zoning standpoint of apartments versus townhomes, single family attached versus single family. It doesn't happen. It's not there. That's not a consideration. Floor plans also are not a consideration. We don't provide you floor plans. We don't have to provide floor plans. And I've done a ton of, of apartment complexes and floor plans are not what's done at this stage. And I don't think you've ever, I don't know anybody, I've never seen an instance where this board has suggested we need a floor plan. No place for snow. Let's talk about that for a second. Um, exhibit twenty-two. You will see with this new site plan exactly where all the locations for snow are. There are many, many snow locations. And they're designated on exhibit twenty-two. They're not going to go out into Medina Road. Uh, was this offered during the hearing? This is being offered now in response.
Okay. Well, to you, the prior, the prior hearing had that issue or had many of those places, but. Uh, and was already in, but I did not know that someone was going to complain about snow, so I'm presenting it now. So. Um. Kids crossing street to go to a park. Clearly, everyone is concerned about child safety. But I've been living with this issue now and waiting to do for the last month and a half. Children do not cross busy streets by themselves. We have places throughout this county. In fact, I just saw a place in Naperville, Knapp, I think it's Knapp or Knack Park. That has the parking lot on the other side of Mill Street, which is, we know is a very large street. Very busy street across the street from the park. So you don't even park at the park when you go to this and it's a park that has soccer fields, et cetera, baseball. The park, the main parking is across the street. We are used to crossing streets. We'll put it, you know, that's just something that is required in this world. Um. Not posting stuff, you know, we agreed that we would post extra, extra reports. We posted them. Before the last meeting, the changes here are very, very minimal. And the only difference between what was posted and what you have in front of you is two feet additional pavement. Uh. In sum. The evidence in this case. The actual evidence, the sworn testimony with evidence is that this matter comply, this project complies with the zoning ordinance. And we're going to ask for a recommendation and support to the county board. Thank you for your time. Okay, thank you. Alright, um. I'm going to set this matter for a recommendation on uh. At our June sixth hearing at five thirty. Which will conduct in this room. Uh. So June sixth, the board will deliberate about the case once the record is closed. I'm going to hold the record open until May ten. For the additional submission of information from the petitioner or any member of the public. Reason that I'm doing that is to afford. The one lady and any others, uh, the right of some effective examination, cross-examination. Questions, however you want to style it. You have a right to. Uh, cross-examine the uh. Petitioner with respect to the presentation. We, to do that in a meaningful way does indeed mean that you have to have some reasonable access. Uh, to the evidence presented uh during the hearing. Uh, attorneys could look at this and form, formulate their arguments and questions, uh, they think relatively quickly, but. Those of you who are non-attorneys might not be quite as familiar, so. You uh are asked to uh examine this record. With the cooperation of the staff and then formulate whatever you uh need to do. Uh, in order to complete your information. And I'd like to set May ten. Uh, for the deadline for submission of any of that additional information. So is that clear? Here the lady that asked, sir, do you have a procedural question?
Yes, I would.
Okay, just tell me the question.
So the question is this, the Village of Addison hearing took place and that guy next recommended a builder. So the question is this, the village of Addison hearing took place and that guy recommended a builder construction company that they were planning to use. So my question, and I'm still planning to use the same company.
Well, I wish you the best, uh, I have no idea.
Because that company, I looked it up, it has three hundred plus complaints on the Better Business Bureau website.
Okay, uh, that may be a building department issue. Um, and I don't know what builder they intend to use, but frankly, it's, um, I don't think it's present through material to our deliberations about. The use of the site and the development of the project. So with that.
There's a maintenance question, so is it maintenance for us to respond or for them to submit the documents?
No, the documents are already here, they're in the record, that's why I say you have to confer with the staff. Get those documents, get the exhibits that you suggest that you had not seen before the hearing this evening. And then formulate whatever information or additional questions or whatever they have based on that review.
I don't think they've submitted everything, the one that they just gave me to that document.
But it's part of the record that I just, you see, you got to talk to the staff people, find out what's in the record, review the record. I think you could probably do some of this online or make a personal visit. Okay. Well, that's the way I understand it works. So with that, I think I'm ready to close the hearing for this evening, thank you all very much.